Let me just get my mic here, okay. Can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite in its scope.
Thank you. Just want to note for everyone that Mr. Brenneman and Ms. Pickens are attending via Zoom this evening. We'll now move to the hearing of citizens, three minutes. If there's anyone here to speak, please come forward, state your name and print your name and address on, I believe there's a paper with the board secretary.
Hello, my name is Mary Jane Canning and I live at 1645 Skyline Drive in the city of Erie. I just want to bring up a couple of things and clarify a couple of things. Couple, it could be a month ago, or I'm not sure how long ago, Kevin Cooney wrote in a column that the trophies at East High School were thrown out. I have no way of verifying this and I don't know if it's true or not. But I thought that this was a good time to bring up a couple of things about archives and Erie East High. In the mid 1990s, when the new school was being imagined, I started a, an archive committee and there were many members who were graduates of East High. And we had contact with graduates from 1923 to that time. At the same time, we raised over $50,000 of private money to have the water fountain backsplashes preserved and placed in the new school. Concurrently, the committee and I put together boxes and boxes, we wrapped and packaged the trophies and other archives that belonged to the school and we repeatedly asked for a secure location. The only location we were given was what I called the attic of East High School. After I retired in 2006 and, and then I was still working with the district, so probably was around 2014, all that time, we were never allowed access to the archives. So at this, and we wanted to organize them, I'm not saying they were organized in any way. But I thought this was a good time, since I read that article in the newspaper, that it would be good to honor, make sure we were honoring those graduates, I really believe in the Erie City School District. And at that time, I don't remember whether it was 2006 or 2014, probably all that time, I was recommending that some kind of a room in one of, at least one of the buildings be designated as a museum area for the archives of all the schools, because this district has a rich history as well as a way, it's a way to honor its students and teachers all these years. And I, it's hard to believe that it was 23 years ago that we dedicated Erie's High School, which is, I realize, no longer a high school. So that's what I want to bring up. I don't know, if you probably can't answer the question of trophies, but is there a way that we can resurrect the archives and protect them and organize them and have access to them?
Thank you, Ms. Canning. Does someone want to respond? I know Mr. Harkins had raised the same concern the other day.
Well, we've, he's, okay, Mr. Brockman? I'll take it. So when the consolidation occurred, we did not move any of the Erie, East Erie trophies to Erie High, everything remained at East. The conversation, I believe, started now, because in the new, when the, the construction project that's going on underway at Erie High School, we're gonna have a new athletic entrance, which is off the back of the building. There is going to be a dedicated area there for a Hall of Fame. And the idea behind the Hall of Fame is that it will be for all of our old high schools leading up to one school being Erie High. And so the original plan was that we would create some kind of a committee to decide what trophies would remain at East, what trophies would be brought over to Erie High, and it would be the same thing for Strong Vincent, as well as the Central Falcons. And in all reality, we really should be talking about the Academy teams when they were there. We are about nine months away from that portion of the building being completed, so we've got time in front of us to really put together a plan for what that area will look like. In the meantime, I could tell you that at no time were any trophies thrown away. We would not disregard our past to, for just about any reason at this point.
Well, that's, I'm very happy to hear that. They, the trophies weren't the only items, and they weren't all athletic trophies either. There were school newspapers from 1923 to the time that I retired and literary works and things like that, that were all work of the students, so I doubt that you checked on that. I know, or maybe you did, I don't know, they were up in what I call the attic and not a secure area. Do you know anything about that?
I, I do not. I know what area you are talking about. And I can make sure that somebody goes over there sometime this week to check on that, to see how organized it is, see if everything is still in the condition that it was when it was brought there.
Right.
When the building was erected.
Uniforms, cheerleading uniforms, those kind of things that really are quite culturally and historically interesting to people, some people anyways. Okay, well, thank you very much. I, you know, I have an archive committee that would be very interested in, in working with you somehow, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, just to clarify, do you know for a fact that stuff is still up there? Because we're speaking about it and you're talking, you're coming across that it's there.
I have not put my eyes on it. I have not physically gone up and did an actual inventory of what's there. I was in the building for 10 years as an employee in that building. And during my time, nobody went up there and threw anything out. I will make a point to visit the building sometime this week, so that I can go up to that area and look. I know that we did not move specifically the athletic trophies, because I had a phone call from the East alumni person today, actually, at 2:30, asking specifically about the trophies. And we did not touch or move a single one of them when we did the consolidation. I'll be more than happy to go to East, put eyes on everything, see if I can make sense of what's up there, and then report back to the board.
Madam President.
I, I know it's not my time to talk, but I do want to add that we had not had the chance to really organize. They were in plastic tubs, so when you see it, it's not organized.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Cooley. Oh, so I want to let her know that it's not like she said it wasn't only athletics. You know, I was step team, step team had won several trophies. I have not even laid, I don't know, on those. So I think I'm happy to hear that you're gonna go up, someone's gonna go and lay eyes on them to see what's there, and that we're going to do a Hall of Fame. Because that is history and students haven't looked up to that, and they can proudly say, that was my dad, that was my mom. You know, they can reflect and feel a connection.
Thank you. Ms. Harkins?
I have a couple reactions. When I saw that Kevin Cooney article, concerned me, because although I have no reason to believe that he was right, it didn't want him to be. And I wanted to know more about it, so I asked a few people here today. And I was told that an East administrator called Erica Irwin, and she attempted to confront Mr. Cooney, and we just see. And I give less credit than that. One thing I want to say is what we want to have, I believe, is a monument. Where no one would dare take anything. We want, we wanted to establish that these items are revered and treasured by us. So that somebody, an employee or someone, this meeting person doesn't just get tempted to walk away with something. In the late seventies, when we operated the museum as a school district, there were stolen bases allegedly, and I don't believe they were ever found. And so there's just that template for fear that something could, could get legs and maybe some wouldn't know. I know that Academy's trophies, a good amount of them are in disarray and a closeted building. And I think the same is, which is certain, is Canning's, at least, I think Vincent's, they would have worked, as far as I know. And I don't know what happened to the little memorial things either, they're still. Anyway, the point is, I had thought we were gonna have a conversation, I still believe we should, about this as a board, because I don't want to be at odds with that aim to have all of those historical artifacts fall towards one site, like outlined by you, you know. I've kind of drifted back to thinking they should remain in the buildings where the students who attended them earned it in time. But that shouldn't be decided one way or another by a conversation. This, we should just find the opportunity to consider this, that all of us contribute to the sculpture. There's also tiles that were at East and Roosevelt. I think I've heard that they were in the service center, is that still true?
That is still true.
But see, people just say these things and nobody's for sure until it's said here and you give us the assurance. And again, you may not know everything, I'm not saying you're not caring or trying, it's just that how do we know somebody is shouldn't sneak up or something. We just don't want them to dare do that. So until we formally decide whatever's gonna be invaded, these things, just please. I think that's all for now, I don't want to go into any conversations for the meeting. It's important and it matters to people. There's a lot of treasured items, we should handle that with respect.
Thanks, Ms. Harkins. Before we leave the conversation, I do just want to confirm, Erica, you did reach out to Mr. Cooney, is that correct?
The same day.
Uh huh. And, and what was the response from him?
There was no response.
Okay. So we're not even aware where he got that information before he printed it in the paper?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, we, I, we were not even aware of what the, the media inquiry was regarding, or I couldn't relay that information by message, left some information saying that's not correct, or, but.
So maybe Mr. Brockman, after you lay eyes on everything, you could coordinate back with Erica, so maybe we can go back to Mr. Cooney and try again to repair whatever damage was done? That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any other speakers? No? Okay, let's move on. The kind of first item on our agenda is the vacant school board seat, so I'll start the conversation. You all have in your packet a paper. It says, discussion of proposal for filling vacant board seats. Ms. Jones was kind enough to put this together, so we have a couple of decision points to make this evening, and I hope we can have a, a pretty robust conversation to figure out how we want to move forward. So hopefully you all received 19 applications in total. I do want to let the board know that Dr. Titus decided to rescind their application today, so we're down, we're removing Dr. Titus from the list, and we're now down to 18 applicants. So I, I think our, I first want to open it up for anyone to, if you have comments about the candidates, things that you want to say, just generally speaking about the quality or the number before we move into any decision points.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Brenneman?
I do want to note that I've managed to speak with 15 of the 18 applicants. And I would just say that A, I was surprised by the number of applicants, but B, really tremendous pool of candidates that are deeply passionate about the district, about the children in the district and our educators and the community, and we, we have a really great selection, and I'm really enthused by, by them and of the, I haven't heard from, back from three of the 18, but I, I, I believe that those that I haven't heard from, they, they too have some really good strong, you know, letters and resumes as well.
Thanks, Mr. Brenneman, and thanks for contacting them from space where you're apparently living now, so that's very cool. Yes, Ms. Cooley.
You know, and reading over, I look at applicants, I see we have a couple people who were formerly employed by the district. There's one person who's still employed by the district. So if, if committed to the board, she'll have to give up the position that she has. But I love it when they say, it's always been my goal to work with the students and the families, to go back to the communities. And then you stop and you wonder, well, where you've been all these years, why come you never took a, a run for the school board? You know. Whatever their reasons may have been at that time, that's like, you know, that's one thing, but I can believe there are a couple on this list who did run and they lost, but I'm glad they submit their names. But we just have to just be mindful, this is to anyone, if you're interested and you have a passion and you're concerned, take a stab and run for it. Don't wait till something comes open and then flood the gates. So that's it.
Thanks, Ms. Cooley.
Madam President, the young gentleman from the collegiate, the senior, I mean, he, he was phenomenal, but I'd like to know why isn't he sitting here as a student member? And then somebody from Erie High. Unfortunately, I think the other young gentleman was 18, 19 or something, he was already out of school, so that applied.
That was a woman I thought, a girl.
Was it a girl at Penn State?
No, actually, that's a, he's a former student of mine, as a matter of fact, he got an A in my Intro to American Government class.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was big now. So I would only say that maybe we could reach out to that young man at collegiate and put him on as a student rep.
Yeah, I, I actually thought the same thing, Ms. Sheridan, that it might be time to reboot the student rep program, and maybe he could be our first one, and then, of course, go to Erie High. And I'd also like to reiterate Ms. Cooley's points, we have six seats, right, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Six seats on the ballot this spring, so I hope some of these folks will go pull petitions, they should be doing that pretty soon here, and, and get on the ballot, for sure. Okay, if there's no more general discussion, let's talk about how we move forward. So the first point of discussion is, how many of these candidates do we want to invite to speak at our meeting next week? We can open this up, one thought would be, let's have them all come, I mean, they've all taken the time to apply, they could, we can invite them all to come, limit the amount of time they could speak, you know, to a minute or two, to just concisely introduce themselves and tell us why they want to run. Alternatively, if we feel so inclined tonight, we could start eliminating candidates and ranking them, and then only invite our top selections to, to speak next week. So let's start on that point. How do we feel about who comes next week to speak at the meeting? Mr. Harkins?
Madam President.
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Pickens, go ahead, I didn't see your hand.
Are we looking to have them speak at the main board meeting, or are we looking at having them at the committee of the whole? Like, will we just dedicate the whole committee of the hold to them? If we did a full, if the decision is let everyone come and have their moment, can we commit the committee of hold to them?
We, we could commit the committee of the whole, I think the original thought was we'd have them at the public meeting, so that they, they had that opportunity to speak, you know, to the, where the public is more, I guess, there's not many of them there either, but I had thought about the main meeting, but again, that's an interesting point, we could, we could consider committee of the whole alternatively?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not making ma, I'm just thinking.
No, but I appreciate the suggestion, that's a good, good thought. Mr. Harkins?
I always fret about scrunching in a lot of activity at the committee of the whole. Think that would be putting a lot of pressure on us to sort of, I mean, and also think that the regular meeting would be good to do this app, because public would be introduced. See who we are given the value. That's my, you know, that. The other thing is, your first question, if we eliminate people before we give everybody a chance to speak, we might be justified with criticizing by having given someone a chance to be I'm not saying that's necessarily so. We're gonna have them speak, it's gonna be really, really, then we're all down from there. And I would say not, not to rate people or not to chuck people, you know, scar people, but just find a number that each of us could advance, and not with rankings or anything, just say each of us would advance three names and five names, and that would give us a big pool, you know, mutual. At least, common name, names that become among some of us. Three of us, eight of us, only three, there's 24 names, but surely only 24. This is probably 24 persons. These are too few. Just seems to me, if we're gonna do that, then have them speak, introduce the public and seen by us. We, we maybe ought to wait until that point to begin to focus. Down.
Yeah, and I think we should talk in a minute about how we move candidates forward, but I just want to stay on the issue of who comes to speak next week. So I heard you say, Mr. Harkins, you'd like, you're thinking maybe everyone should, so we're not eliminating anyone.
Well, I'm just pointing out that if you don't do that, because it wouldn't give somebody that we don't know.
Madam President, did I hear you say two minutes probably?
Well, let's, I mean, we could do the math, we've got 18 of them, right, so.
Yeah, that'd be 34 minutes if we gave them two minutes apiece.
Right.
For the eight. Eighteen?
Because Dr. Titus is.
Okay.
So you know, that'd be roughly, now you're thinking about them coming up to the podium, I mean, it probably will take up a good 45 minutes, I would say, to get through them all. How does everyone feel about that?
I agree with Ms. Harkins that we should hear from all of them, because we don't want the public to think, we talked about being open. And we don't want the public to think, well, who did they shut out, who didn't they shut out? Introducing ourselves will be the opportunity for the public as well as the board to see them, and I would want the board to be criticized of favoritism or this, that, the other, they need to be able to hear who's interested in representing them and their children.
It's two minutes long enough, though.
I think so, coupled with this, a couple of all the, you know.
I think they should have the opportunity to speak for themselves, I mean, their resumes speak for them, obviously, but it's a good opportunity to hear if they have anything that they additionally would like to add or anything. Then maybe we have, I mean, are we gonna be asking them questions as well, or, I mean, that, I, I get the time?
I, I, I mean, I think that's what the board to decide, my, my personal feeling is, I do want to be somewhat cautious of time, but we, we can have that discussion as well.
I appreciate that Mr. Brenneman reached out to several of the candidates to get some feedback as well, so he put the time and effort into that.
And I suppose to that point, any of us could do that, right? So I'm hearing some general consensus around inviting them all to come and speak, is that what I'm hearing from the board? Ms. Sheridan, you look like you're not sure.
Kind of perplexed, because I didn't know that we could reach out to the candidates and call them and talk. Or I would have done that myself, as Mr. Cooley, I'm kind of nosy. I applaud you, Mr. Brenneman, I did not even know I could do that. I thought maybe I was gonna break up a rule or a law that said I couldn't do it. So maybe that should have been clarified to all of us?
And I apologize, perhaps we should have clarified that, Ms. Sheridan.
Oh, you don't have to apologize, but I was a little taken back when he said he interviewed everybody, and I was like, whoa, can you do that?
So are we all in agreement that everyone is invited to speak? And how do we feel about the time limit there? Mr. Nichols, would you like to propose an alternative time, other than two minutes?
Citizens, three minutes, that's all. I agree with you, it should be limited to two minutes of course.
Three minutes? So we understand.
What did city council do? Didn't they give them three minutes to go up and speak, introduce themselves?
I did it, but I can't remember how long, it was very brief, it was literally like, here's my name, here's why, and you sat down, so, but I don't recall the time.
Did they ask questions?
No.
Can't recall.
No questions.
So I'm in agreement, three minutes.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Cooley.
I've moved that we invite the 18 interested candidates and give them three minutes each to speak.
Second it. Well, at this point, we're just developing a consensus, we're not taking motions, but the sentiment is registered.
Yes, thank you for moving us forward there. Okay, so we are in agreement that we'll invite all 18, and we'll give them three minutes, so Ms. Jones, you'll reach out to them with that information, okay?
About two minutes with questions. I don't want to prolong it, but I just mean if someone actually proposes a good question. I don't want to extend the time.
I don't think we have time for that.
Okay. Okay.
Jay raised his hand.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Mr. Brenneman, gosh, I feel better.
I just have a technical question, I guess, has anybody verified that everybody is eligible to, to be, to fill this, is there any, you know, not, 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 in a non-eligible, is everybody eligible?
There, there's one that's still working at Piper Burley, just a couple, yeah. So if you're, if you're working for the district.
Yeah.
Me and I have a, sitting on top there.
So if I, if I may comment on that, so section three 22 of the school code does prohibit any employee of the school district from being a school board member, but they could be a school board member up to the day, excuse me, they could be an employee up to the day that they are appointed. So it would, if you were to decide to move forward with that person, they would have the option to submit their immediate resignation.
Yeah, Mr. Walker, I, looking over the resumes and speaking with them, I don't think there's anybody that's directly employed by the district so much as they're working for an organization that's contracted with the organization, is there any differences in applying that? And if this is a fact, can anybody communicate this to the applicants?
In clarification of that, if you are.
And that's the case, Mr. Walker, this, she's employed by Family Services, we just checked, so contracted at PB.
Which is good, thank you, and I haven't seen any of the applications, so I, I don't know who is and who isn't. But no, contractors are fine.
Contractors are fine, okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
What about the student who currently? Is that, yeah, I, is there any legal reasons why they couldn't serve on the board, assuming?
Hunt that to Mr. Walker as well.
Is he 18?
There, there's no prohibition against students. There's practical concerns, but there's not legal concerns.
Okay. Thank you. And he is, that student is just 18, I believe, yeah. Yeah.
So the requirement is being a citizen of the Commonwealth, having a good moral character, and being 18 years of age or upwards, and having been a resident of the district for at least one year prior to the date of appointment.
Did we vet that? Does anyone, betting the year-long residency requirement? Betting the year-long residency requirement?
Leave the requirements were included in the advertisement that was sent out, so they were made aware of that. We, uh, recommendation would be that we get that verified prior to them taking the oath or it's making it. Appointment.
So we're gonna act under the assumption that they are eligible? Yes, and perhaps verify the residency requirement prior to the vote? Okay. Okay, Mr. Brenneman, does that satisfy your question? That was a good question. Clearly, we had to work through a few things there.
Yeah, no, that's a question I had, I'd had, cause I, I did notice that there's a number, there's a number of applicants who, uh, are. Work for contracted aid, uh, organizations contracted with the district, not just the one. So I just, I just wanna clarification on that. Um, of course, you know, I think. If, if there's no conflict with that, it's just probably as simple, if, if any of them were picked, recusing themselves from certain, uh. Votes like, you know, you and Ms. Gillespie and others who maybe have that, but, um, I. I think every single one of them has been in the district for more than a year, so I think we're at least good in that part.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's assume then, um, they'll all come to the meeting next week and they'll all speak for their three minutes. Now, how will, what will we do next is the next question? Um, so if you look at the discussion points that we put down there, um, I'm at item number three then. Um, we could at that point each put forward our top candidates. Mr. Harkins, that's kind of what you just said, so. Each of us could write down our top three or our top five or whatever number we want. We would write them down, give them to Ms. Jones. I think, Mr. Walker, she would read each of them. Am I correct? Cause that all needs to be public. And then she would tell us which names appeared on more than one of our lists. So, you know, if, if I write down Jane Doe and so does Ms. Sheridan, then Jane Doe moves on because Jane Doe got. Two votes essentially, so that might help us limit the, the pool to at least get a group of finalists. Do we like? Do we like that idea? Does that sound like it makes sense to folks?
I like that simpler approach than that one and two.
Okay, we'll get there in a second, but, okay, so that's how we'll, we'll narrow our candidates then. We'll all write down. Do we wanna do our top three or our top five or our top two? What do we wanna do?
That's after we hear them.
After we hear them.
I do have just one question. If someone's married to a employee, would that be?
That is not a disqualifier.
Okay. So we're gonna write down our top choices. What, how many? Our top two, our top three, our top five, our top ten? What do we wanna do?
Personally, I like the top five. That way we can come to a consensus or present, attend, potentially go into executive session. After everybody has.
No, we're not. Have to do this all publicly.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
Yes, okay, yes. So I heard you say top five.
Yeah.
Okay. Did I hear someone else?
I like three.
I would like about three.
I like two or more.
Okay, Ms. Pickens said three, Mr. Harkins said three, Mr. Nichols, what did you say?
Two or more.
Two or more, so you could live with three? Ms. Sheridan?
Three.
Three? Do you have a thought, Ms. Cooley? Okay, Mr. Brenneman, do you have a thought there?
I, I would prefer to, just cause I, I imagine the length of time it's gonna take to read, you know, eight members times three. Uh, and to go through that, I'd be, I. I personally, just for time and because I, I think if we know who our top two are, I think that that's. Um, pretty good, but, uh, if. You know, I'll go with whatever the majority goes with.
Okay. Sounded like we had a lot of consensus around three, so.
And if we have a tie for three, if we could out of eight, we could.
Yeah.
Then we'd have four or something.
So can everyone live with our top three? Okay.
Yeah, maybe whatever number we come up with. Doesn't have to be considered votes, but they rise to the top, but it's obvious to us who's got support.
Agree. Yes, I, I think if we each put forward our top three, I, I hope, hope. There will be some that rise to the top. So, Mr. Walker, how will we do that? Will we? As I said, write them down or ranking or whatever, but then will Ms. Jones read each of, you know, Ms. Devlin's top three, or will we read them? What, how will we do that?
I think for purposes of, uh, efficiency, I'm, I'm looking at smarter people than I, um. There'd probably be a way to throw a spreadsheet up on the computer and the names as they're read out could be dropped in and the. Top three could bubble to the top.
Okay. Great. But each of our choices has to be read aloud, am I correct? That has to be public? I can't just write my three down and slide them over to Mr.
That is correct. Any document you would do that on and, and slide those over would be subject to write to know, so we might as well just read them.
Okay.
Could I?
Yes, Mr. Harkins.
Could I just disagree respectfully, just to try to explain my reason for that? If we, if we wrote three names down and shuffled them down and then they were tallied, Angela has the names. Who I sent. And, and the spreadsheet has. Jane Doe, Rippey. Six, whatever the numbers are, then at some point we have a, we, and when we've narrowed it down, we have a vote between one or two of them. And that's absolutely. I'm not sure what we. What are, what are we getting away with that we, uh? Wrote down the names and, and I'm trying, one of the things I'm looking for is simultaneousness to. So it's two separate things. If we, if we go down the row and state our, our preferences or. Write down our names, I think there's something better for having Angela. Stumble down. Collect them at once. That's.
The, it's a matter of process.
Well, so I'm just saying, do we really have to, uh? Be careful about. Writing down our advancing the three names that we choose. Because at that point, it doesn't matter. It matters when we have to be serious to vote for or against someone. But how we arrive. There with cool.
So, so, Mr. Harkins, I would, I would say, if you're concerned, if I may summarize it or rephrase it. If your concern is you wouldn't let, want one person's indication of who their top three. To influence another person's by discussing it out loud and.
Yeah.
Reading the room.
Yeah.
Then. Maybe putting them on paper and shifting them over to Mr. Jones would be fine and, and that way it's all done by the time that we. Say which way they've gone.
Okay.
We have to take action, of course.
Correct. That, that, that. I think is a very. Salient comment regarding that process.
Mr. Cletus has something on?
If we really wanted to expedite it, we could probably build a spreadsheet. And give each board member a laptop and make it put their names in. That would be the quickest way to do it. Rather than have.
How does the board feel about that? I mean, I, I don't know how much longer it's gonna take us to jot our names down, but.
Easiest way possible.
Okay, so maybe we can think about that piece of the process. What we've decided is we're going to put forward our top three folks, right? And then we'll come back to you with exactly how we're gonna do that electronically or on paper. So let's say now we have our, our, we each have our top three and they've been collated and we've got a couple, hopefully that rose to the top. Um, now how do we wanna move forward? So. Do we wanna talk there about the finalists? Do we wanna pause and have discussion? Like, I'm gonna say, here's why I like Jane Doe and she's in my top? Or do we wanna just keep moving forward? That's my first question.
I'd say we just vote.
Mr. Nichols said to vote, Mr. Harkins?
Or talk. Or at that point say, well, here's the situation. We'll have been narrowed, so we don't have to do this. Be complex thing to be just this. How does everyone, we can just, you could just ask that question then.
So we'll, we'll have the opportunity of people, if, if someone wants to speak at that point. They can just kind of say, you know, Ms. Devlin, we wanna, we'll say something, otherwise we'll just move right to voting. I'm fine with that, remaining flexible. Okay. Okay. All right, so now let's say we have our, our small pool. How are we going to vote on them? Um, so I'm at number five on your sheet here. So we could just start voting, you know, the, the person that received the most number was on the most of our list as a finalist. We could nominate that person and we can all vote yea or nay like we do at a reorganization meeting. Um, I've heard some concern about that, like, I don't really wanna vote no against this person who put their name out there, so that's a thought. Um, the other alternative and Mr. Nichols, where you said about the ones and twos. I stole this from Michigan's Public School Association, um, um, School Board Association. They did this. They said each board member lists their first and second choice. The top choice would receive two vote, two points. Your second choice would receive one point and then we just tally it up and the numbers tell the story, so.
As advanced, man.
It, it seems numerical, so we, so what would end up happening there is one person would have the most points and then we would just nominate that person and vote on them. It saves us from voting on multiple folks, just a suggestion.
Well, again, I don't think we have to. Lock ourselves into something at this point and we'll have the opportunity that night, that time, once there's. Once they've spoken, you can add at that point to this.
Yes.
It would be easier for all of us to prepare for next week's meeting to have all that set up ahead of time. Otherwise, we're, we're going back and trying to build out some type of building, tally spreadsheet to do this.
Yeah, and, and I hope, I, I don't, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here. I just wanna be prepared, cause I feel like I don't want us to look. To be frank, I don't want us to look stupid. I want us to look like we know what we're doing here. Um. So yes, Mr. Harkins, I do hear you and I, I think we should have some flexibility, but I would like to have a structure that we think we're gonna follow. Um, do we like the point option or do we just wanna start voting on our finalists? Where is everyone on that?
I like the points, Madam President.
Mr. Brenneman likes points.
I do too.
Ms. Sheridan does as well. It's Cooley does as well. Ms. Pickens, do you have a thought? No.
Open either way, if we have points or if we just could vote, so whatever the majority goes with, I can go with.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then let's try to do the point system, okay? So that means then. Angela, do you have that ballot? Did you bring the ballot? No, so.
I do have copies of it.
Okay, so Angela will prepare a document. It will have all of the.
And, listen, I can work out how all the voting.
Okay. Great.
Part two.
Okay, great.
Part two, Madam President, can we invite, um, Shane Dexter, who's the senior at Collegiate Academy? To come on board as a youth board member to, maybe he will like to do that and. Eliminate that, because I'm sure he has plans to go to college. I don't know if it's local, but I would hate to have him maybe. Get points and then we're doing this all over again, so maybe. Ask him to remove himself and serve the rest of the year as a youth board member.
One of the youth board members. We should have somebody from Mary High as well.
Well, I think in the past it was rotated, am I right? So like a month and a month or something like that, right?
Two months.
Two months? Okay, okay. I know, Ms. Sheridan, you had said that. I, I like that idea too. I think that makes a lot of sense. I also think Mr. Brenneman mentioned to me that he. Mr. Dexter, I think, is being inducted into National Honor Society that night, so he probably couldn't come to the meeting anyway, so. You know, being in high school, he has another schedule.
Right.
So, yes, um, so Ms. Jones, maybe you could reach out to him and let him know, you know, that we, we'd like to put him on as a, as a student representative.
For two months.
For two months and see if he'd be amenable to that. And then we'll kind of take him out of the rest of the process if he's amenable. Okay. So then let's assume we've all tallied and we come up with our person that has, let's hope somebody has the most numbers. We don't have a tie. Um, we'll nominate that, I'll, I'll ask someone to nominate that person, get a second, we'll do the vote and then they'll be immediately sworn in. Okay. Um, and then just to wrap up there. I think all candidates should receive a letter of thanks from the board office when we're completed. And then I know Ms. Jones had questions about where we wanna do this on the agenda, so. She has indicated one option is we could do the speeches, um, at the conclusion of the board business. Or another option would be to do kind of all of this before the Stairclimber Awards when there's a larger audience. Um, where do we wanna put this on the agenda?
I think somewhere late in the viewing is better than early.
Jay Brenneman raised his hand.
Thank you, Don. Yes, Mr. Brenneman.
I think it would be, if we had an efficient, timely, you know, approach to this. I, part of me is like, this would be really awesome for the kids and others who are there. To see a new board member get selected and sworn in and then that board member to participate in the rest of the activities of the board. I just think that would be really awesome. Um, but at the same time, I don't, you know. Again, it all comes down to the time. If it's something that's efficient, we're able to do within a reasonable amount of time, I think we should frontload it. Otherwise, I would suggest moving it, um, you know, further back in, in the meeting.
Well, even if we're efficient, if we have, we're gonna be an hour doing it. I think that's unfair to those great school kids who are coming in to report.
Ms. Jones, yes.
The only issue with. Having them sworn in and taking a seat prior to business is that they don't have privy to board docs. They don't. They haven't reviewed any of the items. They really. Wouldn't be able to vote because they don't have access to the information.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cletus, were you gonna say something?
I, I just wanted to mention that we had tried in the past to do presentations when the Stairclimbers were there. And a couple of them won twenty minutes or, or even longer and. Became very antsy during that and I think probably about five to ten minutes of presentations is all we could. Could handle with all the students in the audience.
So I, I think, you know, if it was just the voting part, we probably could do that efficiently, now that we've, you know, beaten it to death, Mr. Brenneman. We probably could do that, but I think the hour of speaking that we've all agreed on might be too much for the students in the room. Um, okay.
Yeah, again, just wishful thinking, that's all. But as a parent with three little ones, I know I would not be able to keep them that long.
Mr. Harkins, do you wanna?
Important conversation for these applicants to us. To us, to, uh. Learn about them, evaluate them and judge them. Because of what Angela pointed out, that should be after our business is done at some point later in the meeting. Those that are interested. Might stick around, uh. Interest and, uh. I just, I don't think we should assume that people wanna get the hell out of there. I think it would be a good exercise in citizens' public affairs to have. Have a full meeting like that. There's another possibility is to not make the vote that night after we've heard from them and a lot of. Questions. I don't wanna prolong it. I'm just trying to point out a few things to consider. So if someone, you know, devil's advocate, there's just. You just, my leading is to late in the meeting. Done our business and then if you do pick somebody that, and they're, they're smart. They're not on the spot or expect me to deal with things. Real equipped. And they'll get a taste of.
So it sounds like, oh, yes, Ms. Pickens?
Uh, I'm sorry, um, is there any way that we can do it during the, uh? Um, I'm sorry, my brain just went blank. When we have the community speak, can we have them go after that? And then that way whoever it is, they gotta. You know, they can stay around for the rest of the meeting and all of that.
So, so your suggestion is this, they speak at the time of the, when the community speaks, but maybe we hold the voting part to the end?
Mm-hmm.
Could do that?
It's the very beginning, but then that's keeping the kids there.
Isn't the public comment after the Stairclimber?
Yes, directly after.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of head nods on that. Okay. Ms. Jones, how does that sound for the agenda then? Okay. 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 So I think we're all clear. Um, we will, I'll work with Ms. Jones to put together an updated. Document like this, so everybody knows what we're doing. We'll work to inform the candidates of what they can expect and when to show up and all of that. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item before we move on?
Uh, Madam President, I just wanna say that, uh, you expertly navigated this. I'm really impressed by everybody's input on this, so I. I think this is for celebrating that we made it seem so, uh, uh, you know, well, well thought out and well done.
Thank you, and now we will be the model for city council as they go through the process. Yes, they can watch and.
Graduator at eleven o'clock next Wednesday when we're still.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Appreciate that. Okay, then we will move on to our next item. Thank you all for your patience with that conversation. We will move on. Uh, item three, Black History Month. We have a presentation by Mr. Nixon and Ms. Irwin.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Excitedly, it is February, it is February's closing in real soon, which tells us it's Black History Month. Gives us the opportunity to honor, bring awareness, and celebrate Black history. Black culture. So what we want to do is just kind of take you through our Black History page. Oh, sorry. Good. Okay, what we want to do is take you through our Black History page, um, just kind of talk about some certain points. Um, Erica and I worked together with Johnny Johnson, and basically came up with this for you. Uh, so to start off, uh, we are going to replicate what we did last year. Last year, we did short biographies and posters that were sent out to the schools a week in advance. Um, so every week, there was a specific theme that came out underneath, um, subject areas or topics. So this year's theme is going to be Trailblazers and Beneficiaries. And the weeks are going to be, week one would be Language and Literature. Week two would be STEM. Week three will be Arts and Music, and week four will be Social Studies and Politics. And so what we're going to do again is we're going to, we will push the short biographies out. Uh, the administrators will, will read these off to the schools, so it'll definitely hit the school community and even further make, make an impact in the classrooms when they're reading these biographies. And then the posters, uh, will be put out by our print shop, and they will be in a highly visible area in the school for all, all to see and to, um, identify and bring awareness to.
So as Ken mentioned, the theme this year is Trailblazers and Beneficiaries, and so, uh, we'll present, um, one trailblazer and one beneficiary each week through those posters that Ken mentioned and through the biographies. But we know that what we really want to do is make the connection between our past and what's happening today and our future, and we're going to do that in the classroom uh, with these, the, the focus on particular subjects, as Ken mentioned, each week. Um, so what we're at, just to expand on that a little bit, what we're asking, um, each school to do is to design an activity, uh, that week. Um, the first week is, uh, Language and Literature. Um, and what we found was really effective and fun and interesting last year was asking the schools to submit, uh, an actual artifact of, of the work that they were doing. And, um, when you get a moment, if you haven't already, please check out, uh, the website where, um, those artifacts are, are from last year are included. If you click on any of those, um, you'll, you'll see examples of the work that our students did last year. Um, it's a way to show the, the students and the community that this celebration isn't just talk, that we're actually learning and producing and, uh, asking students to apply what they've learned uh, on each of those weeks. So we're really excited about that. That will again be housed and updated um, weekly on, on this website. This obviously is the, the two thousand and two um, artifacts that you're looking at, but I think we were all really kind of blown away by some of the variety of the work that the students were doing. Um, and the creativity, not just in, like, the art and music realm, but applying that to all of the different subjects. Got a lot of engagement, too, when we shared this, these examples of, of this work um, on, on our social media platforms as well. So, um, that, that's the part that was really effective last year that we're gonna, gonna replicate.
And also, I'll be remiss to, to not present, uh, speak on behalf of somebody else. Ms. Sheridan was part of this as well. She had a lot of influence and insight into this, this, uh, building this program out, so I don't want to leave her out. Actually, it was her, her idea to do the Trailblazers and the Beneficiaries, so it's much appreciated. Uh, so the other part I'm going to talk to you about is the resources. So if you look right here, and then we're intentionally showing you this page. And again, this page is housed right now at eryst.org forward slash Black History. Um, there'll be a, a highlight that I'll share with you and another easy way to find it when we're wrapping up here. Um, so on this Black History Month resources page, we're going to add on, Johnny Johnson gave us a few new resources. So underneath this area, we'll also add on, uh, what's called SharedHeritage.org. We'll also add on, uh, Burley Legacy Alliance.org. That's just a couple of the ones that he, he did share with us. Um, also, it's a little slower, but also we're, we're proud to, um, share with you that in direct response to um, Director Brenneman's request and the School Board Resolution around, uh, making a Black History site that would be ongoing and, and always refreshing. Uh, we are going to add a, a referral site, a referral page. Um, so now, when you look under the Trailblazers and Changemakers, and you click on that, and you scroll down here, um, this gives the, the community, as well as folks that have represented, um, you know, uh, done a lot, made our, our own local Trailblazers in Erie, uh, have the ability to be referred now at, at, at the ability of just doing an email. So folks that may have lived in Erie, taught in Erie, uh, worked in Erie, or just made an impact that may be living elsewhere, elsewise, now folks can, can directly email them to us, so we can keep this page, um, ongoing and continuous. And so just a couple of the names you're just going to share, so you can see real quick.
So, um, i- in addition, and this is kind of the, the the newest thing that we're bringing to the table this year is with the help of Don and our IMD team here at the district, um, we're going to be producing a series of videos around Black History Month, um, uh, in which we interview several people. Um, we're going to produce about a video a week, um, hearing from, highlighting, uh, the different perspectives of uh, people who can speak to, again, our past, present, and future. We've already, um, filmed a few of these, a couple of these videos. The first is an interview with Johnny Johnson, who talks a lot about, um, uh, our history as a district and the, um, kind of those pioneering first Black educators who helped pave the way, uh, to where we are. Um, this, Mr. Nixon has a video in which he talks about, um, our current diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. Um, you can also look forward to interviews with, um, an alum and a current teacher or administrator, so all through different lenses, um, speaking about, um, the role, the importance, um, and the accomplishments of Black educators specifically, um, who are district and to the community as a whole. We'll, uh, launch those videos, um, at the beginning of the month, one a week. Um, they'll be shared on this page. And also all of our, uh, platforms, including our YouTube channel.
Thank you. So we do have this at the lower end, celebrating Black History all year. It's a direct link to WQLN's Black Culture page, which is, which is a very vast and in-depth page. It talks about Black culture, so definitely encourage you to check that out. Um, in addition to that, uh, the, again, the, the page has been, um, on the forward slash Black History off of the website. But, um, you know, knowing that we have the opportunity to now house it at the, on the actual Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion page. So if you go to the page here now, my mouse has jumped a little bit. Yeah, you got, I don't know why. Thank you. So now on the, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion page, you can see right down on the, the index on this side, it's working out. Um, that we have all these different resources, um, where we'll house our celebrating Black History page here on this, on this website, on this part of the school's website. So just excited about, again, excited about the opportunity to bring awareness and, and, and to Black culture, Black African culture, and then um, knowing that we have this house on this page, um, it'll be an ongoing resource for our view. Is there any other questions to answer, speak to?
Will we be, um, highlighting with its Hispanic American Month, when it's Native American Month, we will be highlighting the same?
Yeah, I could, I can speak to that directly. So, um, a couple of years ago, we actually had the Goal Four Team, when we were in the thick of the beginning of work of a strategic plan. And, uh, the Goal Four Team itself actually came up with, uh, in looking at a couple of different university, um, celebrate monthly celebration calendars, and then talking to African believers across the state, we actually have uh, compiled a list of, um, specific celebrations that we highlight. And so Erica, you know, her and I, we kind of worked together, just making sure that the banner, uh, those are typically housed on the banners, so we do want to make sure that the banner will, uh, speak about, you know, Hispanic American Heritage Month, um, LGBTQI Pride Month, you know, those types of things will be highlighted on that banner. Uh, then this, just at a more in-depth level, will be the Black History page itself.
I'm going to submit this to you, excuse me. His name is Mr. William Hurd. He's a hundred years old. He still lives on his own. He drives. And I'm just thinking about him due to history in the city of Erie. He served in the military, so there's, that's history. He's a hundred years old. He's very sharp. He's very vibrant.
He had a job at the post office. I've known him since the fifties. He had a job at the post office, and, uh, they were astounded he didn't have a criminal record, and they had to hire him, you know, way back, but he always was very industrious, and he fell a hundred. And I've known him for a long time. Do you have Earl Lawrence on that? I, I saw Ada. Earl would be her dad. He was a music teacher out in Fairview, couldn't get a job, I imagine, in the city at that time. Uh, is, is he on your list?
Uh.
He was my drum teacher in nineteen sixty-four, and he was about eighty then.
Well, we took, we take. Yeah, if you wanted.
Yeah, Earl is a great guy.
Yeah, I can reach out, I'll reach out to Johnny Johnson to make sure we could.
He's a winner.
So, uh, the, the goal here is just to, um, show a- again, what students are doing in the classroom, help build that awareness, and just do it in a way that's engaging through the videos and that will live on, um, through the website, so. Um, and we know that some of the individual schools are also doing, uh, some supplementary, um, recognition or events. I mean, we would absolutely highlight those as well as they come up, but we felt it was important, again, to do this kind of district-wide unified, um, recognition.
I think it's, I think it's working. I, I was concerned when we changed all our textbooks, you know. Columbus didn't discover America. It was already here. There are people here, and, and I was, I thought with those new textbooks that we would be having people to show up meetings like they have in other states, and we haven't had a problem with that. We're going to have to, um, stretch well on our culture in our schools. People are tolerant of one another, as they do.
Other questions for Erica and Ken before they go?
We're going to go on.
Thank you. Oh, you have a, he has a paper referral coming down. I, I just want to say that I love that this is local focus. I think with Black History Month, you know, we could just do the same old stuff that everybody does, and we could talk about Rosa Parks, and we should. But like, the local focus, I'm sure, much driven by Mr. Johnson, which I do appreciate, is fantastic. I love that.
Yeah, we, we know people are not turning to our website and our social media to a- as the primary source of information about a Rosa Parks, but what they can't find anywhere else, and what we should be doing, and what we're attempting to do with this website is bring exactly what you said, the local focus, local information, um, the people who have really had a, a hands-on part of building this district and continuing to help it succeed today.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Names may already be, I thought I might have seen them before, but there's a couple of people, if Johnny's involved, he's probably going to involve it, just in case somebody got over one of theirs.
Thank you. We welcome the input. The list is not at all exhaustive, which is why we're asking people to continue to submit names.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next item, I just do want to recognize Ms. Yule, who I, I risked, came in, um, one of our applicants for the vacancy seat, so I just want to make sure everyone is aware that she is here today. Okay, let's move on to item number four, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, Mr. Toledo.
Uh, yes, it's officially budget season now. We have, uh, a deadline of January twenty-six to either adopt a resolution saying we aren't going to go over our Act One index or move ahead with the early budget process, so that we can put a referendum question on the May primary to, to go above that index. Um, given that the, this year, our Act One index is six point two percent. We did move ahead and put that on as a recommendation to not exceed the index for next week's meeting, but I did want to allow the board some time to discuss if, if there was any discussion regarding that.
Well, six point two would be less than the inflation rate last year, but with the new contract we have in place in touch. It, it, I don't have a problem with it.
Anyone else? I certainly have no issue with that as well. Okay? Any other questions, Mr. Toledo, on that one? Okay, thanks, Mr. Toledo. We'll move on to item five, Facilities Plan, Mr. Brockman.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so at your table and online, uh, there are two documents that go along with agenda item, this agenda item, excuse me. The first one that we'll discuss is the, uh, table that is in front of you. As I know Mr. Harkins is aware, uh, at some point before the, more or less around the Thanksgiving holiday, uh, we looked at a couple of, at least one option for, um, replacing the existing lights that light up the facade of Collegiate Academy. Uh, so prior to the first construction project that we did there, there were lights that ran along the railing. Uh, obviously, with all the work that we put in, we were not going to go ahead and recommend drilling holes back into the marble and the uh, concrete stone that we just replaced. But we definitely want to make sure that we're highlighting that side of the building and really brighten it up. And so we, uh, in front of you, you'll see three different options. That's that top chart, uh, or lighting options. So the first option, uh, and with all of these options, essentially, the plan is that they will put new poles which sit in the stadium and extend up from the corner of the concession stands, and they're utilizing LED lights that will sit on top of the light posts, and when we did this at the demonstration, uh, when we angled it, one of these lights lit up half of the building, and I know Mr. Harkins can talk to you, but we'll talk also about how well it, it looked. Um, so the three options that we have in front of us, uh, the option one is basically installing the lights that we viewed on that day, which would be white LED, and it would just light up the side of Collegiate Academy in, in white, and that would be on during night. Um, there are two other options that are there, and they will basically means that instead of just having white lights, we can program them to be any color that we want. So if Erie High is playing a football game at night, and we want to light up the building purple and gold, we can do that. From what the architects have told me, obviously, they don't have a preference between white or the, the colored options, the programmed colored options. They did indicate that option two, if we are going to go with the programming one, is a better option than option three.
Because?
Because of the manufacturer type, yeah, and it's more about on the programming side than it is on the wattage. Uh, and all of these are going to be LEDs, and so the, the amount of draw that it's going to have electric, electricity-wise, it's, it's not really going to make that big of a difference if we go with the whites or we go with the colors.
I've seen our Christmas, for Natty Christmas to play, display up at Erie High, so Legion needs something to have a chance to compete with that. They do quite a job up at Erie High. I think it's a good idea. The visibility of that building's pretty good, right, to the?
It is, and, and it would be, as you drive up State Street, you can imagine, you will be able to see the entire face of that building as you drive up State Street.
And if we can throw up purple and gold, maybe people don't notice that a third of the lights are out on the scoreboard, it's like that. Option. I like the color option.
Like the color options.
Two things, uh, mid, mid-football season, Summer came here after attending a game and was concerned about the lighting and concessions in the area. Horseshoe, and so the night I was there with, uh, I expressed that concern, seemed to me that the contractor said they would put a pole on either side of the concession stand with a fixture in it. on either side of the concession stand with a fixture aimed at the school.
Yep.
But it would be flexible fixtures that could be put and aimed downward from those poles onto the front of the concession stand to light up that area. Which is a safety concern. So I guess whatever we do, I think that something matters to me. And I think it would sound like to have that option to adjustable lighting in the area of the concessions.
Yes. The other thing that I am investigating with the electrical contractor that is doing the work at Collegiate is to actually put in new can lights on the apron part of the concession stand. So that when you're underneath that canopy, there's lights that shine down. Right now, there is nothing there. And so right at the concession area, we just have wall packs that are LED that are on the side of the building. But I think to help out with that also, if we can put lights in the ceiling, the apron part, that shine down, that would also assist.
Those would be important to me.
Yep.
Anyone else have any kind of preference or guidance for Mr. Brockman on this question of lighting? They want some direction?
Yes. So at this point, I'll go back to what, after I get direction here, then I can get a formal change order created and then that would be voted on next month at the February meeting.
So I guess my question is always, do we have the money? I mean, what, how does this fit into everything here?
Thank you. Mr. Brockman goes through the rest of this. You can see at the bottom of this spreadsheet that there's a series of change orders on Erie High. And, and Wilson that meant out to a million dollars in savings. So it will be, it will more than offset the lighting. And then he also has two recommendations on paving that he'd like to use a portion of that savings to expedite as well.
Thank you, Mr. Palito. So I know that many of you know what the condition of the parking lot right outside of Joanna Connell looks like. As well as if anybody has been to the service center as well as the condition of that parking lot. What we did is we went forward and I spoke with the Thomas Construction that is doing the work up at Erie High. They're doing a lot of paving work with us through the projects that we have at Erie High. And so these are the two numbers that I got from them. To fully mill down, which is take it down to the base level, prepare what's underneath and then pour brand-new asphalt in front of Joanna Connell. Would be about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And as well as the service center, same basic process that's got three hundred and fifty. I'm looking to get some kind of direction now so that we can get these change orders also put on for February so that once the weather breaks, we can get on the schedule to have both of these areas repaired as soon as possible. And as Mr. Palito indicated, the bottom chart are all of the change orders that are actually on the agenda for next week for approval. You'll see some doubling. So Thomas Construction is for Phase One and for Phase Two. What we found is that the Phase One project is close enough to its conclusion and there are still some items that are outstanding. To make life easier on us as well as on the contractors, what we're planning on doing is basically taking any of the unfinished work and transferring it from the first project to the second project. You'll notice that for the most part, most of these are pretty much close to equal. So the, the deduct for Thomas Construction is five hundred and eighty-two thousand, the add is five hundred and four thousand. The difference there and why we're getting such a big credit back is all of the unused unit costs that are embedded into the contracts that we have. When we signed the contract with Rave for the Phase One project, there's about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of unit costs built into that contract, which are used for unforeseen conditions, additional work that we need to do. Well, the Phase One project went along so well that we really didn't have to use any of those dollars, which is why we're getting all of that back as a credit.
The front lot at Connell, just sort of talking the same thing. That's what I call, I had called the drive-through drop-off.
Correct.
That's unsafe to walk on.
Correct.
And I'm glad to see us, it's occurred to me because I've seen it in our, I walk through here sometimes. And it just seems like there might be a drainage problem on the north half of it. It just seems like the whole north half of it is disaster. If we just really mill and we pave, is there an underlying drainage?
Once we mill down and we get to the base level, we'll be able to put eyes on what the drainage is. And if we do need to make, and if, we have to adapt at that point, then we'll adapt at that point.
Just so we don't make it look nice for a year or two and have it collapsing.
Correct. I mean, and the truth is that that's essentially what we've been doing the past couple of years. We'll cold patch it or we'll just put a temporary patch on. And at this point, both the service center and Joanna Connell have gone beyond what those individual patches can do. I mean, we put a cold patch down, the first heavy snow, the snow plows come through, it rips up everything that we put down.
Does the service center have some concrete driveways? Because there must be a lot of truck traffic there going into schools.
There is concrete aprons. Outside of that, everything is asphalt.
Ground down asphalt.
Ground down asphalt. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Brockman about these items?
The back lot, Madam President, can I address him? The back lot, you're thinking of the runway through the front.
Correct.
The back parking lot is okay?
Yes.
The side, I mean.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So is everyone okay with the, I mean, obviously the change orders that Mr. Brockman mentioned are already on our agenda for January. Do we, do we have enough consensus to give him the go-ahead to move forward with the paving? And then also, where do we want to be on the options for lighting? It sounds like the money will shake out. So I heard you say
The option two.
The good option two works. So I saw a head nod from Escholsby as well.
Option two gives you the flexibility of moving fixtures on that pole.
Yes, it will.
So you're okay with that, Mr. Harkins? Anyone opposed to that option two? Give me a head shake. Okay. Okay, Mr. Brockman, you're good?
I'm good.
Since we're talking, I would like to add always Jefferson always looks so bad because of the snowplow. And I drove by there the other day again, and I know it's fixed at the end of the season, but we go the entire winter and it just looks atrocious. So just wanted to raise that again. I know you're aware. Thanks.
Yes. The last item on this agenda item, or the last part of this agenda item is a very sneak preview of what the new Edison is going to look like. This drawing is from December fifteenth. It is already changed in a very small way, but at this point, this is essentially what the actual plan is going to look like. Now, at the February first committee of the whole, we plan on bringing the architects in to go through the full rendition of what it's going to look like. At that point, you'll see renderings, you'll see elevations of what the outside is, is going to look like. You'll see some renderings of what the inside is going to look like in certain areas. So we'll just, and I'll try to go through this quickly. On that first page, this is the site plan. If you look to what is the left side of the picture, you'll see an outline of where the current building is. Obviously, the proposal is to put this in that grassy area that is behind the current building. The idea behind the building is that we're, they, the, the architects designed it to have this pod system. And so the first floor and the second floor kind of mirror each other as far as what were, were you have. I will note that this is probably the sixth iteration of this. We've had four individual meetings with the Edison teachers and administration and solicited their feedback on what they would like to see in the building. As a result of how many individuals' parents are actually drivers there. They, you can see that there is a nice parent loop that goes around the backside of the building as well as in front of the building. The idea being, let's take traffic off of bacon. Let's take traffic off of East Lake Road and let's try to create a better way for them to pick up their children. If we want to turn the page to the first floor.
Mr. Brockman, hold on one second. Mr. Brenneman, did you have a, I missed your hand. Was it about the last item or are you okay to hold until the end of the Edison? Oh, you're muted.
I can hold till whenever, but it will be strictly about the first page of the Edison part. So whatever.
Let's take your question now then, please.
Okay, so one, I, I know I had mentioned this before, but I think it would be great to be able to preserve one or two of the arches that go into the, the, the building. I think there's a beautiful arches. I know there's a school in Mill Creek and, and other buildings in the region that have preserved them as a park feature, as a you know, archway near or over a walkway, whatever it might be. I think it would be really good for historical purposes because those, those are really tremendous architectural pieces for otherwise could be considered a haphazardly put-together building. The, a couple of other things. So I'm looking at this, I'm trying to think about, if anybody's ever heard of things called desire paths. And if you've ever been to a university, you'll see how like walkways are designed differently than where you see pretty much everywhere else. Because they tend to put sidewalks and pat, and pavers where students walk, where they are going to go, where they desire to go. And I'm looking at this and I'm seeing some disconnection. I'm guessing those yellow blocks are sidewalks. And I'm looking at the, the area where the parking space is towards where the school, the old school would stand. And I see there's no connection between those sidewalks around the parking lot and the actual sidewalks around. And I'm also wondering like for those who are coming straight out the back, are they going to just walk across the grass? Cut across the, the traffic line there through the trees, whatever. That's one question I have about actually connecting those sidewalks. So the students and people are going to walk through it, they will. The one, the other one is that the, it looks like on the right side, forgive me for not remembering the street there. But there, it looks like a, a main entry type because it's like a, it's kind of like the entry of, of Erie High where it's got like that kind of courtyard feel or whatever, the larger paved area. It just sort of dumps there. And I'm, I'm wondering about since it is sort of a, it looks to me, it, it might not be, but it looks to me like an entrance. And if that's the entrance, I would imagine that kids and people are going to want to, to cross there and to step there. And so I'm wondering, you know, maybe we should consider, you know, ask or looking what it might look like to actually have a a pathway across, you know, a paint, a paint or whatever across the street. Thankfully, it doesn't line up with that person's driveway. But you know, if, if somebody is in a wheelchair, a walker like I use, or you know, is, is just walking your kids and you're worried about traffic. You know, and I know this is just paint. But you know, again, right there in the front where those entries and exits to the pave, the parking lots, there should, there should be some marked, especially at the end of the bus loop, there should be some marked crosswalks because those are the most dangerous parts for pedestrians. And people, because there's sidewalks there, they're going to want to cross there and they could hit by, could get hit by a vehicle. So I guess I'm just asking for further consideration about how people will actually use the space and move across the space along with, you know, going to across the street or wherever, back and forth. So those, that's it for me.
Okay.
Both valid.
Noted, Mr. Brockman. Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Brenneman.
Yep. We're rising. So, yes, thank you. If we turn the page, then this is that first floor layout. And for reference, obviously, Mr. Brenneman is correct. The, the main entrance would be essentially located at the top right corner of this picture. The ground floor would be comprised of our pre-K classroom, our kindergarten, first and second grade pods. Along with the gym, a library, a steam area, the office area as well as the cafeteria and the kitchen and the mechanical room and all the other things that schools have. The entrance is, the plan is to have a very big, kind of like the grand staircase, a little bit of a open feel to it. And, and you'll see more pictures on the first one we get to the rendering. But that would lead up to the second floor. The second floor, much like the first floor, is still potted. This would be their third or fourth and our fifth grade classrooms. As well as the additional spaces and classrooms that are there. I will note, and I should have said it when we were on the first floor, that right now Edison has a pantry that is located in a trailer off the back of the building. This will take the pantry and put it inside the building proper. A part of the design is that it will have its own entrance. So that during those events, parents, students can enter into a doorway, which will lead them into a vestibule where the only place to go is the pantry. And unless there's any questions, I don't want to take up too much time with this because we are going to get a much more in-depth preview next, the next committee hall meeting.
Sure. What's exactly in the courtyard?
As of right now, it's question mark. So we were looking to have some kind of an exterior learning space. And so they are not sure whether or not the courtyard will have heartscapes and softscapes that I, I already said that it's probably not a good idea to have grass inside the courtyard because now we're mowing and that's going to be a little bit of an issue. The reason behind the courtyard is because since we're going with this pod concept, that's the only way to have windows on both sides. That if we didn't have an interior courtyard, then we've got some classrooms with windows and some classrooms without windows.
Sure, thanks.
The traffic flow on the top sheet, you know, in the top right where cars are entering from the street and they reach a point where the long road comes through, there's a merging point there. That looks like it could be a.
We must have, when the architects presented this to the team at Edison, I believe we spent forty-five minutes talking about that one area. And the the conversation kind of ended with, at this point, we're going to have to work with our families and figure out how students are going to be dismissed so that that merge point doesn't become a, a tension point for it. Right now, all of the students at Edison exit out one door, they line up outside, the parents come and get them. This has the potential of changing the way that they dismiss students. They are aware of that at Edison. They have been talking through what that process would look like. So that that doesn't become a bottleneck.
Another one looks like where the parent exits below that and the buses enter on the street, the buses lining up there, they turn in and the cars coming out. It looks like a potentially.
Currently, there is one bus from the city and one bus from the YMCA that picks up students because such a large percentage of their population are walkers. And so even if we increase that to four buses, that bus loop will be able to accommodate four buses.
I guess I'm taking a picture when it's like one of the bigger schools.
Yeah.
So you mentioned at the February committee, the whole, the architects would be here. Will the Edison administration or some team be here as well so that we can also ask them their thoughts on some of these items?
I've already mentioned it to the administration there. If we would like more representation from that building. I'm, I'm sure that their team would be more than happy to, to come.
And on that note of getting feedback, will this be presented to the families at Edison to get their thoughts as well?
Yes. In addition to it being presented to the families, because it's a brand-new building, we do have to go through the Act Thirty-four process in which we will have a meeting to present the entire thing to the public where it's kind of a very regimented meeting that we have to go through. Which we're working through when that will be. Most likely, that will be sometime in March. It makes the most sense to just hold that meeting at Edison as opposed to bringing it somewhere else.
But will it be too far in the process to make changes? Like if something is hurt at that meeting that is significant concern from the families, will, will, will we still have time to make those changes?
I believe we will. Like I said, this is the sixth iteration of this. And they've been very good about making changes based on the recommendations of the, at least the team at Edison. So we'll be able to solicit any of the feedback at that.
Thank you.
Almost now the front lawn, there's these figurines on the lawn.
Go in the courtyard area.
In the front, on Sixth Street. And there's a bench dedicated to former Edison TJ Catherine Shute.
We have not gotten into that level of detail as far as those items as well as Mr. Brenneman's. We have not gotten into that level of detail as far as those items, as well as Mr. Brenneman's suggestion of using the archway. Those are also things that we can include in the final design, whether it lives in the courtyard, whether it lives outside somewhere in one of the play areas. These are all things that we do have time to, to get them in.
That's what I was going to say. Two things I have an issue with, Mr. Brown, maybe even the placement of court or, or, or. Even if not the courtyard, it means someone on the outside of the lawn.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on to enrollment report, I do want to let the board know that Ms. Pickens had to um step away from the meeting. She had put a little note up there. I'm not sure if everyone saw it. So she is no longer on the meeting. Okay, enrollment report, Mr. Brockman?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so I will say that we did this about a year ago, almost to the month. Uh, and this is something that we said that we would do. And so I believe that we're looking at doing this quarterly. And so what you are looking at is the altered um display of our enrollment report, uh, obviously not like the, the report that is approved at the um monthly meeting, uh, but this is a, a bigger snapshot of where we are in time. Uh, the first two pages are just raw numbers. These numbers were pulled last week on the first. The top chart shows each of our individual buildings. So this is where our students are going to school. So if you are a cyber student, then you're associated with Apollo as opposed to some of the other reports where it says if you're an east student, even though you're at the cyber program, you're counted in the east headcount. So this is a legitimate headcount of who is actively in those buildings. Below that were our, our cyber and charter numbers. Um, the whole district grouping them by uh charter and then cyber charter, and then it breaks it out into the individual schools.
Our cyber students are assigned to their home districts.
And so in this, in, in this report, they're grouped at the gridling. When the, the monthly report that is approved at the board meeting, they are associated with their home schools.
So one suggestion we do have is this report, um, that Neil's sharing with you minus the, the charts is much easier to read than the report that we have you approve at the meeting. So we could swap the meet, the report that you have at the meeting meeting out for this one and have you approve this one each month because I think it is more meaningful than what we're providing you now.
Yeah, I think it's great. It's really a nice job.
For good ones, neither here.
Okay, so then starting in February, we'll make sure that this is the student enrollment report that is on the agenda.
Questions for Mr. Brockman about the report?
Well, I was appalled to see this huge increase in enrollment in prep, but I forgot they closed Villa and correct, you said, add Villa, they're down twenty. But some of those girls have good taste.
Uh, the, the rest of the graphics that are on here uh follow suit with the graphics that we showed you about a year ago. Uh, each graph is set up the same way. We've got it by gray bands. And then the top bar is the entirety of what that graph is showing. So the first one shows all of the residents of the, the school age residents of the city of Erie. And the good news is that overall, from last year, when the data was pulled to this year, there was an increase in the overall number of students for Erie. If you look prior to that, prior five years, there was a small and steady decline. So the fact that we are starting to go in the other direction is good news for us, good news for everybody in the city. The next chart is the cyber charter enrollment. Uh, as you can see, as of right now, well, is when the data was pulled, we do see a slight increase from the prior year. Uh, and I know that Mr. Palito has spoken at length several times about what we were trying to do to curb that, to get some of those students back.
Yeah, and it's always that one school that Pennsylvania.
P S I.
Half of them are in.
Yeah, P S Iber is the biggest.
And you think they, they do have a relatively good program. It's not that they're paying cable bills or something like that.
There, well, they, they opened a new facility in the area and so they were recruiting heavier than.
Oh, where are they now? They were at the mall one time, right? Years ago.
So they are.
That's really.
That we're there now, well.
That's where we've seen our major increase in students. We actually are starting to see we're getting more students leave for cyber over the last couple of months. So Erica and Krista are actually going through and contacting some of the parents who are going to try to identify why they're leaving uh for, for that uh cyber charter instead of our program and, and hopefully make some adjustments to, to either bring them back or stop.
But we out enroll them all combined, right? We've had nine hundred and forty-six and there's five, that's a huge.
Yes.
That's, that's huge. A lot for the district. When Dallas does not have a program, do they have a group?
I, I believe they do.
Are they starting one now or they did not have one at one point?
Yeah, if, if we wouldn't have had that, uh, just the pandemic, we would have lost probably about another five million dollars a year.
Yes. And that really hasn't bailed off with us that much.
No, no. And so thank you, Mr. Nichols. The next graph on the, in the packet is our in-house cyber enrollment. And as you did note, we, we are bigger than all of our competitors put together, which is very good news um for us. Uh, besides the fact that we think that we just have a better product. Uh, the next chart is our brick and mortar uh charter enrollments. Uh, so that's Rise, Montessori, Percy's House and RB Wiley. Um, you can see when, again, when the data was pulled, we did see a slight increase uh from last year as far as that overall enrollment is. Um, the good thing is, is that we are at or one above at the time, the peak level for what our um brick and mortar uh charter enrollment was, which was in nineteen twenty. So we're, we have one more student than the highest that we've seen.
There's been a huge reduction at Erie Ride.
That is correct.
Re fifty-nine down to two eighty-six, you know, as you were pointing out that they were having some difficulty.
Yeah. Um, when we look at the next one, that's our traditional enrollment. So that's um students who are going to our schools. Uh, you can see that there was a big increase there from when the data was pulled, which is also a good sign. Some of that is because we did take back some of our students from our cyber charter enrollment. Uh, another impact, we believe, is some of the refugee students who were brought into the country the last couple of months.
That's our total enrollment.
That is the number of students who are in our buildings, our traditional program buildings.
It doesn't include our cyber students.
So it does not include our cyber students.
Yeah.
The next chart is our private and parochial. Obviously, we have to track that as the district of residency. Numbers are what they are at that point, but then, and then the last one or the last two, we've got all of our charter enrollment, which um, again, we, we see a, a slight increase from our last, from two years ago, which was the, the, the highest. Uh, we do see an overall increase at this time specifically because of the cyber charter enrollment. Uh, the last graphic is our EPS enrollment. So this is the total number of students that we have. This does not include the students who are in pre-K. So if you look at the first page and you see the total of ten thousand fifty-seven, and then you look at the back page, you're like, well, why are we only at ninety-eight, forty, forty-nine? That's because for this graphic, I removed all of our pre-K students from the count.
You, you have back at the beginning, you have early intervention being two hundred and forty students. That'd be uh pre-K?
So that's a pre-K and then a special education early intervention program.
And that, is that different institutions or?
Uh, it could be different institutions.
I mean, there's an X in front of it for some reason.
Yes, the, the X has to do with the naming of the calendar. That's more of an internal naming of it.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Brockman?
Yeah, I was reading something. Why, why are those powerful city for youth schools on this and change? Because city kids are there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Brockman, for putting that together. Okay, we will move on. Item seven is review of the draft agenda for our January eighteenth meeting. Any questions about the draft agenda? And Ms. Jones, you'll update it now with the items we added for the voting. Okay? Okay. No questions on the draft agenda? Then we move on to item eight. Any other matters? Everyone has talked out this evening. Okay? Okay, with no other matter then, uh, we will adjourn this meeting. And then I believe we have an executive session for personnel and legal matters. Am I correct? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. We'll, we'll stay in here for Mr. Brenneman's. Yeah, okay, so we'll.
Take five.
Take five. Thank you.